Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We have the policy meeting of the Harrison Board of Alderman and Chillicothe. We should stand and say that we have to address this.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Hall, please.
Alvin Misery.
Present.
Alvin Rees. She's here. Remotely. Alvin Davidson.
Present.
Alvin Dorhoff.
Present.
Alvin Miller.
Here.
Alvin Dickerson.
Here.
Alvin Turner.
Present.
Alvin Milner.
Present.
Mayor Bowman.
Present, thank you. We have a forum. While we don't have any ceremonial matters this evening, we do want to stop and pause just for a moment for a moment of silence on the walking down lines here. He passed away recently and most of you know that he attended with Ovi, almost visionary council meeting. So I just wanted to just pause for a moment. Thank you, and on behalf of the city, we present the ordinance to Kami and family and friends. Moving on then to public participation. The city administrator, do we have any agenda requests for the city by the public?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I ask you to please mute or silence yourself until this time. Everybody pick someone who looks good. All right, moving on to the approval of the minutes. First of all, the minutes of the Board of Alderman, June, July twentieth, twenty twenty.
Motion for it.
Say that.
I have a motion from Alvin Davidson with a second from Alvin Misery. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, those minutes stand approved. And moving on to the minutes of the Board of Alderman's work session, July twentieth, twenty twenty.
May I, Chief?
Right there.
I have a motion from Alvin Milner with a second from Alvin Dorhoff. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, those minutes stand approved. Moving on to the agenda items, the first one is the appointment to the EEC board. Who's doing that? Hope you're ready? That's okay, I'll go ahead and do it then. You know, we're working to fill the EEC board now that Mr. Harper's joined us as Economic Development Director. The EEC at Han Center Private Zone is an economic development tool, but we want to build good lives. And in order to be able to do that, we have to have a board, so we are revitalizing that board. And the appointment that I bring before you tonight for your consideration is that Jason Zoror, and you have his application in your packet. I wouldn't give you anything.
I make a motion, we accept. And the patient for the EEC board?
Right there. Thank you, I have a motion from Alvin Milner with a second from Alvin Dorhoff to approve the appointment of Jason Zoror to the EEC board. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that appointment stands. All right, the annual delinquent real estate sale permit event permit, Chief Walker.
Good evening, Mayor, Chairman of the Board. Before you, tonight is the event permit application from Chris Wondor, the best county partner of the revenue. He grew up part of Square Pearl Street, August twenty fourth, for the annual real estate sale for the county. He was a big part in the rollout, surrounding steps, once we bought a sale on the steps. They moved it inside the last couple of years. But COVID nineteen, they can't do that bad this year, so they were asking to close off our first street on the square before the seventh. So we'd rather you, Jacob, here I am, I have no concerns with the events. Staff is recommending approval. Any questions?
Any questions for Chief Walker? I'm just a simple approval, then I move.
That's right.
A motion from Alvin Miller with a second from Alvin Misery. All in favor of approving the seat that permit?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, Chief. Go ahead. All right, moving on, Council Bill thirty-four.
Council Bill thirty-four is a resolution authorizing the city district to send a great law to authorize the intersection of Independence and Washington Street to be a four-way stop in the city of Harrison, established in a package.
Yes, this, uh, this comes from Gasada, R nine School District. They're requesting the intersection of Independence and Washington. We moved from a two-way stop to a four-way stop. We have discussed this intersection for many years. As you're aware, it's the intersection where they often drag the, or roll the stop sign out before and after school or children do. Get back to work in a little bit safer manner. Always does a good stop to ask, let me look at moving and putting crosswalk closures there. They were ordered, and when we got here, we determined that those aren't going to work because of right-hand side issues. It also had a hook on on each side, so that's quite expensive. We're looking to repurpose them in different areas of the community. However, the next thing we've come up with to, to make it a little bit safe, is the four-way stop. Those go close to Pearl Street with, to, uh, Jan Street, which is a little bit concerning that staff is recommending approval, especially the street superintendent, Ted Martin, I believe is a, uh, part of the packet, is a letter from Ted Martin, a memo. So staff recommends approval to do the thirty-five mile on his own through there, which is a little concerning as well. Any questions?
I have a question. How many accidents have been reported this year within that intersection?
Oh, I, I'm not prepared to answer that. Off the, off the top of my head, I don't recall one, but.
And with the rollout of the school sign, that does make that a four-way stop.
But it's correct, but it's not, people aren't used to stopping for a rollout sign. Sometimes it gets missed. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm, I, I just, I didn't get it quite on topic, but I did talk to a few people out there that are really favored doing this four-way stop than anything.
What would be your objection?
Well, because of the, because this one was close to the mechanic, and that they feel like the rollout of signs did that, went to that area, and so I was to ask if there have any accidents in that area. And if there has, then it still feel like it should be a permanent four-way stop all the time, as they could do this summer with the original school. And kids cross that street to go to school at a lot of other places, you know, down the street.
Kind of crossing.
Only place that they have to cross. So, I mean, their, their objection is they think it opens the element on four-way stop that close to the mechanic street. And if you, I go through it every day, and it's, I don't think it would serve very good purpose for driving. And a lot of people pull the stop at mechanic, don't know whether they're supposed to turn or move, there's been a lot of posts there. And so that's a concern to them. Now, I have the proposal of the mayor, that it wasn't received for that.
Alvin Davidson, will you?
Well, I, first I want to respond to, to, um, to Alvin. One accident on a kid is to.
Oh, I totally.
So I, you know, so I've got always err, error on caution of safety. Um, I know we talked about the twenty, uh, thirty-five mile an hour stretch, and I do believe if we're gonna put four there, it needs to go to twenty-five, because it would be thirty-five stop sign, stop sign. But I think, I think we also need to do something about the speed between the two stop signs. Uh, but I do want to err on the side of caution. I realize that the four ways been there, sometimes it gets missed, and then we get put out, or sometimes we get put back in. And so that's kind of my concern. So I'm supportive of the stop sign, but I also think in addition with that, we need to change the speed in between the two stations.
Um, and to your thought too there, I don't know that it's as much about an accident in that spot, it's about the safety of that spot. You know, there are crosswalks there, so no, kids don't cross other areas down that street because there aren't crosswalks there. That's the one main area, in my personal opinion, where I see kids, and I watch that because I put kids on the bus just down the street from there in the mornings. So it's more a matter of providing the safety. And I, and I will say, there have been numerous times of having two kids, three kids now at the middle school, the kids talk about, oh yeah, I was running across that street and almost got hit, you know. So it's not necessarily about a car accident, it's about child being able to cross the street safely. I do want to also agree with David, Mr. Davidson, I think the twenty-five between mechanic and Washington might be as well. But I definitely in favor of the stop sign, for the four way stop.
I have a comment, uh, I have a comment as well. Uh, you know, one of the more recent four-way stops we made was at Starving Hall, and we didn't have a lot of accidents prior to putting that in either of the, the top.
Alvin Johnson.
Uh, I'd say, the speed in between the, uh, stop signs, you could have it somewhere to mechanic and cut up towards it before like, it drops twenty-five before you get to the intersection. And if we did that just before Washington, that would take care of it. There was some level of it too, then move four way, and then on to mechanic.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think we should be just going off, I know that, I think we should be moving that south, and going to twenty-five, because that's the whole, that intersection, that is the only part of that intersection that's not twenty-five on the other side of the stop, like the south side.
Right.
Just going south, and then we come north to you.
Well, and the other, the other thing too, the thought process is we've got twenty-five on the mechanic coming pretty much around the school area. That would be the other school area to go to exit into, and twenty-five would be the speed for that as well.
So let's move this resolution forward about closing the four-way stop there, and she, I think, probably heard the consensus of this board that we'd like to have that twenty-five mile an hour speed limit there. Um, so I'll let you bring that back to us as another item in the future.
Absolutely. We're gonna back to the decision.
Thank you. No, I just, I just asked, and.
I see.
All the changes to speed limits, and it's just a resolution.
But that's good fun, thank you. All right, so, um, is there any further discussion or questions of the chief on Council Bill thirty-four? If not, then can you motion?
I make a motion to set Council Bill thirty-four.
Okay. I have a motion from Alvin Milner with a second from Alvin Davidson to approve Council Bill thirty-four, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you. Thanks.
So Alvin Dickerson is opposed, everyone else is in favor, correct? All right, did you get that, Mr. Walker?
Yeah.
Thank you. So Council Bill thirty-four becomes resolution zero-one-nine. Moving on to Council Bill thirty-five.
Council Bill thirty-five is a resolution of Board of Alderman about the resident of the mayor and the city of Gosegrave, twenty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, and the past department of School District, where school resource officer is established, and I thank you, thank you.
This is the annual School Resource Officer Agreement between the School District and the city to provide school resource officers for doing school in the high school, this one to be putting twenty-twenty-one school year, as they go before the school board last week, it was approved. Uh, we got a few modifications in what they had, and they prefer pricing in there, so they're going to take it back, as we did. And all in all, they knew they were right pricing, and what they would be paying for hours, so I don't have any problems. So Mr. Ratliff presented us with a, uh, shorter version of the School Resource Officer Agreement. Last year, we approved it, you know, fifteen, eighteen, maybe, I don't know. So the school board, uh, School District attorney called Mr. Mallard, who reviewed the document, much shorter, much easier. The major changes, uh, other than being a little shorter, is that it's going from thirty dollars an hour to thirty-three dollars an hour, and per hour, per officer, and, uh, that should, that hasn't changed from the thirty dollars an hour since two thousand and fifteen sixteen years ago. Schools are good with it, we're good with it, schools are good with it. I also provided the history, uh, SR program since eighteen ninety-eight, so we're recommending approval in the new board. This year in the school, Corporal Michaels will be in the high schools, it's, uh, she is just another, and Mike Brooks coming back out on the street, uh, he might be, uh, he's with different conditions of, he's, uh, he's always a veteran in the street, and, uh, he will be in the second, absolutely, we can prove that. Can I make any questions?
Any questions, Mr. Chief? Thank you, I have a motion from Alvin Turner to approve Council Bill thirty-five, and a second from Alvin Misery. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, Council Bill thirty-five is approved and becomes resolution R zero-twenty. Uh, Council Bill thirty-six.
Council Bill thirty-six is an ordinance of the city of Harrison, establishing a minimum removing section of the building of Land Use Code, and this is a code of the city of Harrison, and is a crucial council bill to thirty-six.
Mr. Rattler, well, what do you think?
Good evening, good evening, good evening, Patty. Oh, thirty-six is pretty much just the summary of what we talked about during the air conference session of twenty. But again, any questions about the right of the city here?
You must have done a really good job there last meeting, uh, the city.
Some weird questions.
This is an ordinance. I have a motion from Alvin Dorhoff with a second from Alvin Turner, to suspend the rule and advance Council Bill thirty-six to its second reading. Roll call.
Alvin Miller.
Aye.
Alvin Turner.
Aye.
Alvin Milner.
Aye.
Alvin Dickerson.
Aye.
Alvin Davidson.
Aye.
Alvin Misery.
Aye.
Alvin Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alvin Rees.
Aye.
Thank you, Secretary.
Council Bill zero-three-six is an ordinance of the city of Harrison, though establishing a minimum removing section of the building of Land Use Code, and this is a code of Harrison and the Zerth, and then Council Bill zero-three-six.
Alvin Milner.
Aye.
Alvin Dickerson.
Aye.
Alvin Turner.
Aye.
Alvin Milner.
Aye.
Alvin Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alvin Misery.
Aye.
Alvin Davidson.
Aye.
Alvin Rees.
Aye.
Thank you, Council Bill thirty-six becomes ordinance three-five-zero-three. Council Bill thirty-seven.
Council Bill zero-three-seven is an ordinance allowing the parkway at the south side of East River Parkway, to be able to free one point six east River Parkway, to be able to remove these both portways, and to exempt along parkway at the south side of East River Parkway, and to be restricted no parking, and by the entrance of East River Parkway, completely remove three one point six east River Parkway, before Council Bill zero-three-seven.
Yes, and Siratler, would you introduce Mr. Uh, Kirk, or, I think, Jeff Brown?
This is Paul Brooks, the new director, and he's, he's been on a job for two weeks.
Two tomorrow.
Three weeks tomorrow. So he gets to tell you all about this item for tonight, and you know, we're glad to have Carl with us, and, uh, he is going to add a lot of, uh, good opportunities here for this, so, so glad to have him.
Go ahead, Carl.
Mayor, I'm here for Alvin. The ordinance here tonight is brought to you basically, uh, from a request of a resident that lives at three one one six East River Parkway. Uh, currently, there is no parking on East River Parkway, and he's requested, uh, such parking be established. Uh, currently, there, the current speed limit is twenty-five mile an hour on East River Parkway. There is thirty-two feet width of pavement. If you assume the driving lane is eleven feet going this direction, that leaves us with ten feet of parking on the south side. Uh, there will still will be no parking at the divided entrance through East River Parkway, and it would be cross street with links. But from, from that point back to west, to the next cross street to west, there would be parking allowed on the south side. And staff does, uh, recommendation to approve this. And if you have here, is there any questions you may have?
Did, Alvin Miller? Did we get a, did they do a consensus of the homeowners in that area? Or this?
Very good. There were basically two homeowners that live in that one block, and one of them was happy to go through the homeowner. We did not do a consensus of, uh, currently, that homeowner basically parks his car in an approach or a future street. So he's kind of sort of already parked in there, and just kind of parked in the way that shouldn't be getting, but anyway, it is usually, you can't park there. This will allow him to park on the south side of the street.
Isn't that a fifty-five mile an hour speed limit?
I'm glad you all know the answer to that, because I'm not. I'm kind of new here. I'm still working on streets. I get two instead of two.
Other questions from Mr. Brooks? All right, this is an ordinance.
We have a motion to, to second reading, three, seven.
I have a motion from Alvin Miller with a second from Alvin Misery to advance Council Bill thirty-seven to its second reading. Roll call, please.
Alvin Miller.
Aye.
Alvin Turner.
Aye.
Alvin Rees.
Aye.
Alvin Davidson.
Aye.
Alvin Misery.
Aye.
Alvin Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alvin Milner.
Aye.
And Alvin Dickerson.
Aye.
Council Zero-three-seven is an ordinance allowing parkway at the south side of East River Parkway, to be able to free one one six east River Parkway, to be able to explain and remove the no parking sign, and to exempt along parkway on the south side of East River Parkway, and to be restricted no parking, and by the entrance of East River Parkway, and link to remove three one one six east River Parkway, similarly, Council Zero-three-seven.
Alvin Dickerson.
Aye.
Alvin Milner.
It's too late to ask a question, correct? Thanks, I, I just thought something. Um, aye.
Alvin Misery.
Aye.
Alvin Rees.
Aye.
Alvin Davidson.
Aye.
Alvin Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alvin Milner.
Aye.
Alvin Turner.
Aye.
Okay, Council Bill thirty-seven becomes ordinance three-five-zero-four. And Councilor decided that now we can let you state your question.
Well, my only other thought on that one is that does have a homeowners association. Would they have any say so about any of that? Does, I guess, having to think about it, I don't know, it's a little bit.
Alvin, yeah, it has to be, it is private, private.
Okay. Okay, just thought that.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Burke, did you get that, that Council Bill thirty-seven is ordinance three-five-zero-four? Okay, thank you. Council Bill thirty-eight.
Council Bill thirty-eight is an ordinance allowing restricted no parking on the west side and east side of Bird Avenue, one hundred feet north of East South, right away, and increase the radius of curvature of the intersection of East South Street and Bird Avenue, personal Council Zero-three.
Mr. Brooks.
And Mayor, head of Mayor, Alvin Alvin, this request is basically from the School District, and it's been, uh, works for a number of years, from my understanding. And basically, by, uh, this, this, these improvements, we reduce the potential traffic issues and use the staffing, the amount of school buses, with school buses turning left from State Route seven or East South Street onto Bird Avenue, where there are no cars parked out there on Bird Avenue, within that first hundred people, um, being the east and west side. And also, we're coordinating with MODO, along the very east of the approach, increasing that to Bird Avenue, on to Highway State Route seven, which is along with East South Street, uh, to accommodate current movements. And the mention, cities definitely coordinating with MODO to relocate the investment crossing stomach that is currently under construction. And the staff does recommend adding a no parking sign on Bird Avenue, both on the east and west side, basically from, uh, South Street right away, a hundred feet back to the north, and you saw that on the map, it kind of shows, uh, we have trucks sitting out there on the west side, that's the opposite, no parking. So, yeah, like, I'm not going to be answering questions you may have.
My question is, I mean, you know, take lots of school buses and lots of cars, and I don't think a hundred foot is enough, like, I mean, we've been discussing this, and we also in a, a cheap, open meeting that we have, we have been having for some time, we've been discussing this as far as the distance, and I thought it's going to be considerably more than a hundred feet, so we have been lucky enough, I hope, I hope the school, what the school said, but I don't, I'm not, I'm not supportive of just a hundred feet, I think we need to go back to at least a hundred and fifty foot. And actually, there's a telephone pole, and that's kind of what I'm paving on, I haven't stepped it off in a long time, I did, I used to walk up that way all the time, but I feel like we need to go back all the way to the telephone pole, whatever that distance is. So that was, I would, I would be supportive, because I don't think we're going to claim that we need for school buses to take turns and come out, and we better try, I would say. So, I think we need to do it in a hundred.
Scott, can you do that?
I agree, Scott. I mean, like, two hundred feet, that's a lot of, a lot of.
A hundred. I'm sorry, I'm going to ask Chief, you know how good what the distance is with the telephone pole, because I helped leave more for it than that other meeting, so I can't, I'm not sure what that distance is.
Well, last week, uh, Mr. Ratliff, Carl, Rodney Jacobs, and I went out there, and if I'm referring to the right telephone pole, the correct telephone pole, uh, I believe it's right at about a hundred and fifty feet, I think, is what, uh, Mr. Jacobs said.
It's, it's the second driveway, whether that second driveway, how many is, is the police?
The telephone pole just to the south, and that's it.
Doesn't have to use that far to really do this, and you could, I mean, in a way, which I know.
I agree.
I don't think it's going to solve our problem if we don't take it that far enough to allow the traffic flow there, and, you know, and I know, I, I know the concern is, is the, you know, the person who parks on the street there, but, I mean, that is a two-car garage plus four parking spaces in there, right? So that should hopefully allow them enough vehicles to get out of there. But I don't feel honored if this is by far enough.
So I'm seeing a lot of hidden, it looks like the board is in a queue of that, you know, he could, he would say a hundred and fifty, he would say two, he would, he wants to, but we can amend this ordinance, so I would entertain a motion then to amend the ordinance, certainly, whatever it is that you would wish.
A hundred feet.
Okay, then, first, can you go to two hundred feet? Okay, I have a motion from Alvin Dorhoff to amend, uh, Council Bill thirty-eight to include the side, uh, the distance from a hundred feet to two hundred feet. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from Alvin Misery. Roll call, please.
Alvin Milner.
Aye.
Alvin Dickerson.
Aye.
Alvin Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alvin Milner.
Aye.
Alvin Turner.
Aye.
Alvin Misery.
Aye.
Alvin Davidson.
Aye.
Alvin Rees.
Aye.
Council Zero-three-eight is an ordinance allowing restricted no parking on the west side and east side of Bird Avenue, two hundred feet north of East South Street, right away, and increase the radius of curvature of the intersection of East South Street and Bird Avenue, second to Council Zero-three-eight as committed.
Alvin Misery.
Aye.
Alvin Rees.
Aye.
Alvin Davidson.
Aye.
Alvin Turner.
Aye.
Alvin Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alvin Milner.
Aye.
Alvin Milner.
Aye.
Alvin Dickerson.
Aye.
Thank you, Council Bill thirty-eight becomes ordinance three-five-zero-five. Thank you. Council Bill thirty-eight becomes ordinance three five zero five. Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Thank you.
Good to meet you, Mr. Brooks.
And welcome aboard. Alderman Committee reports. Alderman Dickerson.
Sorry, I left, I left, uh, my meeting, I left meetings.
Alderman Davidson.
Welcome to the city, man.
Alderman Milner.
Hi, nothing.
Alderman Milner.
Arguably, is that.
This is a real quiet side of the board. I'm obviously a little bit more lively over here. Alderman Turner. Alderman Dorah.
I have nothing.
Alderman Zaring.
I'm just going to lay the stat again for all the hard work. How about that, you know? Because I do know that there's a lot put in, and we've still got a lot, a lot of things going on. Have to go to different places to set up for this, and the response times that we get, if something comes up, we couldn't ask for anything better.
Alderman Reese.
I'm sorry, I'm in trouble here.
Oh, right, Alderman Committee reports. Do you have anything to report?
Uh, no, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Ratliff.
Hi, I'm the Alphalot.
Okay.
The Alphalot, years ago, bought some, uh, purple heart signs, and put the city, put up, and, uh, there's a couple of them put up throughout the city, on City Road, probably. They tried to get one, uh, twenty-one, up the hill, where the MODO, you know, it was time, and, and. We finally got the contract, and we finally got the sign up and installed, so we're now, people coming to town, MODO, we're purple heart city, which is supposed to, I have our sign.
Where's that at?
The top of the hill, at the two ninety-one. Thank you, Brad, for all your work, kind of, all of you with it.
Thank you for your work on that. I appreciate that. All right, Mr. Ratliff, go ahead.
Okay, uh, we are still, uh, we are still, um, working on, um, the impact fees that we talked to you about, and one of the things that, um, we did, the lineups, in the Tosh, and done the lecture, very special, we all, um, here, especially in last year. And we really got some information from them, how to really simplify the impact fee, uh, the lecture, how can you make a recommendation? And exactly what we talked about is what they said would be a good option, uh, filled with, um, that, so, sometimes. Jeremy and I received the impact fees, especially in that, and, and it's, I think it'd be a lot more effective. Hopefully, uh, here in the near future, we'll be married that, over to you all, and, uh, and all of that, um, I think there'd be a lot, a lot of help. At your next meeting, Bruce and I will be here to talk about, uh, the water drinking super rate study, how it was accomplished, through that. One of the things that we made sure was in the rate study was the, um, the projects that we talked about, as well as the, uh, the station, as we're running, uh, the, uh, and, uh, the, the water execution center, uh, Lake Luna, City Lake, the others, the, so those numbers are kind of in, and I think you all are going to be pretty happy with what the numbers have turned out on that. Uh, we are also bringing the, the, uh, different stormwater projects. One of the things that we made sure was in that rate study, in the West Water Side, was around a hundred and fifty thousand years toward swing water projects. Uh, and I think that would get a lot of months on the road. With that, I got US, uh, MP, the, how old are you, I can't remember, what is it, USGIs. Uh, got a contract out of them on the early warning, uh, for muddy creek. And one of the things that they, they made sure to get done is there's a precipitation, um, um, data that they have to collect as a part of their early warning system. Because they got to make sure that whatever that fluctuation is, and what type of amounts are raining, and how, uh, muddy creeks are coming down. And they were able to get the temporary ones put in before all the rain had just come. And so that would be a, a good amount of data that they already, uh, own creek there. And, uh, hopefully, uh, by the fifteenth, they are planning to get the more permanent ones put in, but they want to get the temporarys in before the rain hit. And the next component would be that they could start, uh, collecting that data with that time, in the next couple of months, get the actual early warning system resolved. And so hopefully, everybody is following, have a lot more data and information for that, and, so that's a good thing, uh, that they were able to, uh, that information, that. From this last meeting we had, and looking at it, in fact, the cleanup, the MODO did, uh, held it, uh, along through there, and, and so far, we've been, we've been calling things. Then somebody who'd asked, uh, before about Sears, and Mary and I are receiving email back from them, and because of COVID, of all the banks being closed, and open, and all that, uh, their plan is to break down this fall, uh, to, to move forward with that, so that just got held up. For that, I also, uh, there's a, on it, then, a grant, the grant is one point five billion dollars, uh, the local government has sent out in grants for broadband cable. As you know, especially with COVID, there's been a lot of, of talk about broadband and connectivity and all that. So we, uh, any country, a great project, it's not a science, it's a creativity writing. And, um, we, I have, I have a group, through Ben Hart Company, that is going to work with us. I talked to the superintendent this morning about doing a joint effort with the school district, from the grant, for broadband, so that it's not just a city initiative, but it's a city and the school district initiative that we can work together on to hopefully get some funds that would help, uh, get broadband out to, uh, within the whole district and the city. Um, and so, and indeed, and those guys will be heavily involved in that as well, as we move forward to, to try and get those dollars. So hopefully, uh, that'd be something that we can really, uh, talk about. With that, those projects, um, this room, that we utilize, it would be, I have a, uh, Jeremy has, what, how many different additional lines and monitoring connectivity. Uh, so they can utilize this room better for, uh, this, and as well as, Council James, uh, there's, we were able, Chris, uh, worked hard to come up with a plan, and, and the pillar, that's always in the way, will go away. And they, they, the engineers say, yeah, on paper, it looks like it will work. But they looked at it, and, uh, it will, Chris came up with a good plan, and they validated that his plan would work. Um, and we have some more, of course, we can talk through that. With COVID funds, if you remember, the counties had a reminder that it's sixty percent of what the allocated funds is obviously first, then after August, the issue would, um, they would reevaluate. Well, I've been told that if we evaluate is if there's some cities that are utilizing their dollars, and they see that, then they may just say, well, you're not going to get more, and it's in the two cities that use it. So we've mainly tried to get our sixty percent up, uh, by the August date first. And, um, and some of them, some of the department heads, you might see out there twitching a little bit, it's because we're trying to make sure we get all that in, and make sure that we get those dollars out for our community. And if we end up getting more after, we're okay with that, uh, to try to be able to utilize those dollars. Um, so with that, some of those, uh, additional deals would be the, um, devices that you're all using. Uh, Jeremy has gotten additional things for you all, uh, to utilize, so that we do better, do activities for the communities. Um, they tell us that we are, uh, by the end of the month. It was better than when they first opened, because they first opened, they were asking, and they were saying, yeah, maybe December, or January, and then today, they told me, oh, maybe by the end of the month. So they just keep it, but, um, but we're, we're trying to make sure that staff says they've, not your staff, but if the public's going to get into the business of the city, that you've, all of the plans to keep the public. And so with that, I think that's all I have on this.
I just want to take a minute to thank Mr. Ratliff and staff members that I see out there in the room. You know, COVID has changed the way we do business, and everybody is doing extra. And so I really want to just commend, you know, Jeremy Smith, and Danny Martin, and Jim Clark, and Eric Meyer, and Chris Arthur, and who's sitting next to you?
Andy Pollard.
Andy, Andy Pollard, and Carl Brooks, and Chris Dill, and John Horford. Uh, I just want to take a minute just to say thank you all for doing extra for us in this whole COVID thing. I know you all are doing extra, thank you, and I know this board appreciates it. All right, certainly.
I also want to give, uh, kudos to Jim Clark. He, as you all know, we found that the, the, the road was here, and, and they were telling us this last review, that it's going to be another sixty-five thousand dollars for us to do the repairs. Jim called down to the CPG and said, you know, this is kind of ridiculous, that the city still has to take ownership of this, that something should have been, you know, just going to set it through the CPG. And they, uh, actually sent a letter saying that the city does not have to own that, it doesn't own it, and after five years, it's considered an proprietor. So I think Jim, you know, he paid his salary this year, he only gave rid of, uh, that cost, and that was associated with that. And he made sure they sent it in writing, so we got a, a letter in writing. So we'll be, uh, meeting with that industrial company about the new relevance where that they have. So kudos to Jim.
It's open.
Um, the Alphalot sixty-fourty, so, yeah, after the, after, um, August thirty-fourth, there's still forty percent left, potentially forty-six. Um, if we use fifty-five percent, is that maybe forty-five percent, or is that just forty percent accurate on this thirty-fourth, and just clears out, now, forty? I don't want to use it all, but if you don't use all sixteen, fifty-five, three, forty, that would be accurate.
They, they relate to us when they originally came out, the reason they went with the sixty-fourty, is the concern was whether the city went and used all of it in the first three months, and then we have a, so, and there's required, so they had established the sixty-fourty to keep cities from spending all of it, uh, in that three months. And so it was kind of a, a buffer mark. Since that time, they've said additionally, because there are cities like us that need it, if there's other cities or cities that aren't using it, and there's just not really a, they may decide to look and really allocate those funds to the bigger cities based on the need. And so, you know, we, we're letting them know that we have big need, so.
Uh, second of all, computers, um, I know, it's, it's here for our back computers, it's all staff, and, and it's all been upgrading sorts of computers, because in my opinion, it does, it does more work than we have this one time. So, it's, it's staff-wise.
Jeremy, tell us about this.
Well, I see you can say that, that'd be great.
Yeah, he, he can tell you more about that, and he's, and, uh, it's a good thing, I've never, the IT guy, when I first came, he was talking about all these needs, and now that we're here, he's like, could they have opportunity, but if the opportunity comes, yeah, we can talk and hold in. Okay, it's good to have opportunity, but with opportunity, it was a lot of work, and, you know, only myself will, and so we're working through that. We actually were fortunate enough, uh, I was really worried about, uh, supply, um, so we actually put in an order, um, for twenty laptops, and we have designated people that those are all going to, that we are finding as, you know, the market debt's another very cool staff, but if they need to go home or again, they can go. Uh, along with that, so we got those in this week, they told us three weeks, we got them out, and it was bizarre. That doesn't happen on a non-COVID time period, so, um, they, they really ramped up production. And along with that, we're working on doing fire wall project to increase our VPN opportunities. And so that should make that work from multiple themes for all the employees, it's the way it always should have been, having this opportunity to make it really happen. Uh, because along with the Chromebooks, if the Chromebook were ordered, um, you know, that timeline, because of the need of the schools, and all the kids, and everybody that's, I mean, everybody doing Chromebooks, I was really shocked with VPN at all. Um, but those, they, they, we put them in order today, so we'll, we'll hope that we get those for the month, we can start all of that out. You guys will have something a little bit bigger, and hopefully be able to pull the charge.
But all staff has got theirs, that we, is that what, before us?
Yeah, yeah, we're working, we have a stack of boxes on the floor right now, we're working on that, I mean, we rolled out three so far, I mean, they just came in last, they were, what'd you say? So, you know, and so we, I, I immediately said to them, like, hey, now I need three of these to go out the door by Monday. And so we actually had one out the door the next day, and they have that, along with all of our normal, normal break fix stuff. Um, so we're working on it, he's working on the, the, uh, the setup to be able to roll out a little bit quicker, um, but that takes a little bit of time to run. We really worried just spending the MVP here yet, uh, but they, they got here fast, and so we're, we're pretty happy with that.
I just want to make sure your assignments to computers go to the staff.
Yeah, yeah, it's a completely different setup anyway, um, so it, it'll be a little bit, yeah, we're, we're working on it. And that, and that goes along with the, you know, we have a lot of people that, um, a lot of staff in cities that are on top of each other in a lot of areas. And so we're coming up to try to help with some, uh, renovation plans as well, that we can get more staff distance, and more separation. And it does, we, really, maybe we have some staff, two staff in the walls, and so it's just really becoming a, a big issue. So with all the pay, to be able to fix the issue, we're trying to do it much as we can. And Randy is not really good at being the point guard, uh, with the county, and, uh, he gets really tenacious when we tell him not to. And, uh, he's done a really good job of that, because he, he, he gets all their information, and he gets it all prepared, and just sort of, and if they try to kick back any of those items, he rushes back with additional information to get that, and so, Randy's done a really good job of that, too.
And the last question, I think, maybe he's probably going to go to the attorney, he's going to speak, is he going to speak, please? Okay, and, uh, you're probably going to answer all his questions, so I'll answer it.
I'm going to apologize to Randy, I elected to name you when I was naming staff, I know we were very, very shallow during the COVID, so I appreciate that. A report from the second turn.
Not sure if this is what you were looking for, but I do have a report on seemingly never ending side up on Harrison Villas. And, um, after our last meeting, I notified them that you were going to kind of, after the hot, in the other, um, state, and notified them when they were called. And suddenly, they wanted to make a deal again. And so they sent me another letter, it was essentially much of the same things that we already rejected, which I responded, we already said no to that. So then, uh, they sent me another letter, and I, while I responded back with what we would do, and just today, they sent me, okay, we have a deal. If, if this is acceptable, and I think it's worth ninety-five percent there, um, they will agree to build the road within two years, or six months of the sale of the abutted building property. And so, I mean, and if that property is sold today, by the time anybody could do anything with it, it'd need the road, six months ago. So I, that six months was something that, that I pushed back, and if they wanted four years to build the road, then they want three years to build the road, now we're down to two. And, I mean, if it gets it done by July of twenty twenty-two, September of twenty twenty-two, on a hard stop date, that's, that's probably quicker than if we had to force them to do something before we could ever move the state, to the Fed, or someone else, to actually make it some sort of enforcement. Um, we'll agree not to do anything to take any other action, they will post a letter of credit in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars in bank that we approved. And that would be a outstanding letter of credit until they build the road and we accept it and prove it. They have a bid that they sent us, say, from Parker Escavating, Parker, I'm sorry, Pates Enterprises in Parker, Kansas, um, that bid it at seventy-five thousand dollars, and this is as of July nine, twenty twenty. So I need to have our public horse review this bid to make sure that if they don't pursue with this bid, would that satisfy our city's standard, because I don't know that. But assuming that that letter of credit and their proposed bid is acceptable, then we have, if that hard stop date, we've got their agreement to do it, and we. have, if that hard stop date, we've got their agreement to do it, and we've got a, in effect, the money in the bank if they don't. And so that is, uh, that is the deal. They also, um, said that they will sign the development agreement to get it done. Probably, they even gave us the names of their investors, so, uh, we know who to look for even further beyond just this part. Um, we know that, and it is a significant, it's called, their major investor is called Really James Properties, and it is a significant investor in Boeckum House. So, I mean, this is a billions of dollar company. So I was confident that, uh, we're supposed to, we would have resources, they would have resources to support, so.
Well, my question to you, you know, $75,000 today is not $75,000 in two years from now. So my question is, is there something built in that for some reason, is this company going to be a team, if there's just a contract that within the two years, you know, built for $75,000, whether it's this year or two years from now?
Probably not, because this Page Enterprises is just a contractor in proper business. So I think what we'll do is build it an escalator provision that will post the letter of credit, but it would be good for, ultimately good for whatever it costs to build the road.
And there's no chance to, let's say, if they were ever to sell that property for, what? Sell that property or let's say go out of business? Are we stuck holding the bag or are they still out of?
No, because we got the letter of credit. And we could go and get, write the letter of credit and.
And how soon will we have that letter of credit, did you say?
I would, I would anticipate that we had, if this is acceptable, we would have all wrapped up.
They identified the same, is there, I don't know, are they asking for any taxes?
No. Anything on that? Nope. There, and the only thing that they had asked for is they wanted us to pre-commit that if they bought the abutted property and they made an application for, to the state that we would support it, site unseen, and I told them that was a hard no, and they dropped that. So there was no ask from them other than, you're telling.
So just by the reference issue, we're so far away, the question was, did they ask for a tax incentive and, and the councilor said, no, they didn't. So, um, Alderman Miller, did you have something? Alderman Davidson.
No, I, I just asked them what the 5% was, and he answered, very good.
So, um, is the board then comfortable with just a hour notifying Harrison Mobiles LLC if we will accept their offer, um, as we discussed with the, uh, $75,000 letter of credit, your escalation fees? So that the road, uh, whenever it's built, will not cost the city or taxpayers any?
Yes, yes.
There you go.
Thank you. Thank you.
Questions from the media? No questions from the media? Um, I have a couple of comments I want to make before we adjourn. I'm going to ask for this to take that and pass it down to whoever has one of those. Um, I want to make sure that we're clear, that the board is clear, and for anyone that's watching the video is clear, on the agenda request form, there's some misinformation on social media that says that, um, we're not a transparent board. And I want to address with you all this agenda request form. We implemented this, as you all know, with board approval several months ago. And a lot of you on this board have, have been on the board long enough to see citizens come forward with questions and the board and staff having the same little activity. We agree that it was more efficient for a citizen, if they had a question, to submit that question in advance of our meeting, to give staff the opportunity to research it and to respond. I believe it's a much more efficient and transparent way of doing business. And I want to clarify, um, for social media posts that are out there, that this is not an attempt to make it more difficult for the public to, um, approach the board. It's actually an attempt to make it more efficient, because not only can we provide the answer to the citizen, but in actuality, they're actually given more time to speak to us under this process than they were under the former process. If you'll remember, previously, citizens were allowed four minutes to address the board. Under this process, they are allowed increments of three minutes. So with board approval, they can talk to us for three, six, nine or 12 minutes. So I like this process, and I just want to make sure that you all were clear in case you're approached by someone who questions, why are we doing it that way? I think we're doing it that way because it's more efficient and it's really more transparent. We will be bringing additional things to do soon, other transparencies, that will allow citizens to be able to know more about how local government operates. So I just want to clarify that for the board. Um, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Who to adjourn?
I have a motion from Alderman Davidson, but instead of the Alderman Dorhoff, to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, we're adjourned from this meeting and we'll move into work session. Thank you.